Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can you tell them I'm not getting emails anymore? I don't know what's going on. The last two times that I got in, Corey's had to send me the information.
Can you hear me, DJ?
Find out what email Michelle is sending the links to for you.
Right, we'll take care of that. So we're back out of executive session. Just for the record, from the point where we went into executive session, we were joined in executive sessions by Councilmember Conti and Robinson. Correct? Those were the two, just for the record. Jumping into the agenda. And again, welcome. It's our Wednesday after October 14th, Common Council Caucus. Going back to the agenda, consideration of local laws or none being considered.
There were just a few things I wanted to mention with regard to the agenda and the bond ordinances. I don't know if you want me to do that now or when we get to those.
But go ahead.
Okay, I mean, I sent a memo mostly to this effect. I'm not sure that everybody saw it. I know especially from leadership, there is a desire to get all of the bond ordinances on this agenda, which certainly makes sense. Unfortunately, with the way the timing worked out, there were a few things I had to leave open-ended or a few edits that we'll have to make going forward. With regard to the local finance law and the periods of probable usefulness, which of course dictate the maximum terms of the obligations for the bonds. There were a few of those I had to employ a little guesswork on, and I've reached out to department heads or the people requesting those particular bonds. So, you know, hopefully I'll be able to get a clearer sense from them which subsection of local finance law, section 11 applies. That's a little technical sometimes, so I made educated guesses, but may have to adjust some of those. And then with regard to ordinances 34 through 41, I didn't receive signed completed bond authorization requests forms in time on those to get them out on the agenda, so I drafted the ordinances, put the ordinances in the support legislation in the expectation that I will be receiving the completed bond authorization request forms. So I'll have to go back in and plug in the treasurer bond authorization numbers and the treasurer's project numbers on a few of those ordinances. But I should be receiving those from the Budget Office soon. And then there were two corrections I noticed so far. Unfortunately, in 73 pages of legislation, there were bound to be one or two things, despite my best perforating efforts. In ordinance 2710220, which is the ordinance that will eventually officially adopt the budget, section 1 refers to fiscal year 2020, that should say fiscal year 2021. And then on the support legislation, just the first section where it's laying out, you know, the table of contents, I guess, if you will. It does say ordinance 35102.20R. Of course, that R shouldn't be there. That should just be 3510220. I think that's the only area where that particular issue occurred. Those are the two things I've noticed so far, and I just wanted to bring the council up to speed on the need for adjustment and correction on a few of the ordinances going forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams, and that can be done in the Finance Committee when they're being discussed. So, okay, but thank you for the update. Okay, so.
Although Kelly, if I can just now, you know, to some extent, if there's anything that he can update and solidify, you know, before Monday's meeting, he can certainly give us revised versions for us to do so that the Finance Committee doesn't have to do all of those amendments.
Right, and I hope to be able to do that, Councilwoman, on at least a few of the ordinances. I should be able to to cut down on the number of amendments needed, hopefully.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, so we have two public hearings. Yeah, just two public hearings. We have the budget, the 2021 proposed budget hearing, and also a budget hearing on ordinance 179120. That's Mr. Hoey's ordinance. At our meeting on Monday, we'll be taking up Mr. Hoey's ordinance first, obviously, because the budget ordinance will take a greater amount of time to discuss. So we'll take that first. We'll have those public hearings. Local laws held, under local laws are held, under ordinances introduced. And I'll kind of bunch a couple together. Ordinance 2610220 by myself. It's for right away around 75 Livingston Avenue that we have to approve. It's going to go to Finance. It's Albany Distillery, a general distillery down there. That'll be entertained or taken up in Finance, so we can discuss that further. Okay, and then next, for the bonding ordinances that relate to the budget. And I could go through each one, or I can just kind of go, because it's bonding ordinance, or excuse me, ordinance 2710220. To, or would you prefer I go through all of them? Because I can go one by one. I'm here all day, no? Okay, so we'll go, it'll be ordinance 20.
I think we'll be going through them in depth in Finance Committee meetings, so I don't think we have to go through them. And which everyone is welcome to. There's so many and they're so exciting.
Yes, so ordinance 2710220 is the first bonding ordinance and the one that's adopting the budget. Through ordinance 4110220 are the bonding ordinances for this year, and they'll be taken up in the Finance Committee. Mr.
Did I hear Brett, there are some additions that have not been added, or this is it?
No, all the all the bond request forms I've received, I've made ordinance out of those and put those on this.
So these are all the bonding ordinances?
Yes, all the ones I received, correct. And then we just need, I'll need to, you know, make some edits or additions to these.
There's no additional bonding ordinances beyond these.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So there are going to be additional ones? I'm sorry. This is it, just some modifications to what's here?
Correct, yeah. I mean, I have not been made aware of any further bond requests, and I put ordinances on the agenda for all bond requests I was aware of, I guess.
So you might be surprised.
We all would be.
Are we voting on these?
If I can just get clarification, Jenny. For example, when we meet Mara with APD and AFD, will we be going over the bond ordinances at that time?
That was the original plan, but since we just got them, it might be a difficult thing. They might need to come back in. So I think that what my plan will be is to go through the budget itself. If council members feel like we, I mean, it's going to be tight to be able to go through the bonding ordinances as well. So it's going to, unfortunately, they might need to come back in, but ideally, yes. I don't think any of us want to add on extra meetings, but if we need to do that to get through all the bonding ordinances, then we need to.
We also have the issue with them for some of the resolutions for the Reserve Funds. For example, the Police Department, which is really a cash payment for the police cars, which I'm thrilled about.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I agree with your email. I don't, my, and of course, my familiarity with the Capital Reserve Fund is more from a school budget perspective, which is different, but it's not, it's still the same concept in a municipality. I don't, it kind of defies the whole purpose of having a Capital Reserve Fund if it's not a reserve. It's just, you're just paying for it then. So I don't know why we jumped through those hoops.
Right, right. So Brett, just to make you aware of, you know, the thing that we're questioning is we have these resolutions that create reserve funds, and I know that the budget specified that money was coming out of a reserve fund, but it's really money that is being spent out of, you know, essentially cash out of this out of this budget in the same way as we're paying salaries or buying office equipment, et cetera. So we're a little puzzled as to why we're jumping through the hoop of making that a, come out of a reserve fund, especially since our city charter says that any capital, any allocation of funding for a capital improvement it continues for, you know, is not what it, I forgot the name of the word. But it doesn't end at the end of the fiscal year. So it strikes me as it's possible just to do this as an allocation in the budget as opposed to setting up these separate reserve funds.
Yep, so the request for the reserve funds to be created and put on on the support legislation came from the Budget Office, so I suppose that's a conversation with them.
Yeah, so if you could alert them to the fact that we're looking for clarification as to why that approach is necessary.
And I'll be reaching out to Mike as well, but yeah, I think Judy has a good point, if you don't mind noting that. But I'll also be reaching out to Mike on it to get clarification.
Noted.
Thank you.
Okay, that was ordinances on our active calendar, under ordinances held, item number 13, which is Mr. Hoey's ordinance. It is on our active calendar, but we do, we are waiting. And Mr. Pichardo, can you just speak to the fact that we're waiting for county planning and the Planning Board, correct? To do?
Yes, so I just, I actually just went to the agenda of the County Planning Board. So tomorrow, we both have a public hearing from the Planning Board for the City-County Board, and then tomorrow as well is the County Planning Board as well, who's having a hearing on it. So I then should get the decision within a couple, like within 48 hours after that. And then we would, I would forward them all to the council members, and then we can most likely have a vote after our public hearing on Monday.
Okay, yeah, and since it was sent to committee, it hasn't been taken up yet. This is a redo of Mr. Hoey's last ordinances, you know, involving the veto override and all of that. So we redid it. So what may occur is I might end up discharging it from Mr. Conti. I see you.
Sometimes my hand goes out of frame. I'm still confused as to why, under state law, this is a required referral to the Planning Board.
You're referring to the County-County Planning Board?
Is it does not affect the items, as I understand, that are delineated in state law?
I wholeheartedly agree with you, Mr. Conti. I was advised by Corporation Counsel that it had to go to the County Planning Board. I wholly disagreed, but to get it moving, I got it on the agenda.
Okay, and it's also, I don't understand why it's going before the City Planning Board again, when council previously indicated that it didn't have to, and this is simply an outgrowth of the process they already reviewed and spaced on their prior decisions, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, and this has kind of an unusual history because there was actually a committee, I know Brett attended a lot of the meetings, Dave Gallin, and I forget who else, where in effect this committee re-authored Tom's ordinance in a way that they felt was satisfactory to the Planning Board, even though the Planning Board didn't actually convene as part of that review group. So I assume there's some way of getting that message out to the Planning Board, Brett, that this is no different than this whole series of negotiations that were done with Tom Hoey so that we wouldn't override the mayor's veto. And this product really has been going over by Corp Counsel and a whole bunch of people, and it shouldn't really require, if any, de novo review by the Planning Board. Brett, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, first I'll address Richard's points. With regard to the County Planning Board, I certainly understand the counterarguments that it wouldn't have to go to the County Planning Board. But if I'm remembering section 239M correctly off the top of my head, it does say that any, unfortunately paraphrasing here, I don't have it pulled up in front of me, but any zoning ordinance that would affect a variety of types of property within the city, including property that's next to a state highway or next to a border with another municipality. Any such changes to our zoning laws would have to go to the County Planning Board. Again, since this would cover the entire city and it's a zoning change, in theory, it would sort of check all of the boxes that are laid out in 239M.
That would mean that every single amendment that we make has to go to the Planning Board. I think the intent of that section, as I recall, relates to when you're rezoning a property or containing, maybe changing rules within a district. But that's a real broad interpretation, which we've never used before in all my time on the council until now.
Okay, and you know, there is another section of section, another subsection of 239M that states that we can come to an agreement with the County Planning Board about things that do or do not have to go to them for the review. So, you know, potentially, we can get clarification from the county on whether situations like this in the future need to.
Yeah, and I'm working on that with the county to have that delineation, if we can have a MOA or something to get that delineation. But like I said, I don't, I don't believe it needed to go to 239, under 239M to go over there, but in the end, it's, I will say this, out of due course, it's fine because it worked with the timing, but I agree.
And Councilmember Brian, could you state your question again for me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, this had an unusual history. There was a working group that you were part of, and Amy LeBlanc and Brad Glass and Dave Gallin.
Oh, right.
And that working group basically went through word for word of this ordinance, and the whole thing was done as an effort to prevent Tom's original ordinance from going to an override vote. So, I mean, it's kind of a hybrid process, but I certainly hope, even though the Planning Board didn't actually sit down as Planning Board during those sessions, I would assume that there's some way of eliminating an awful lot of work by letting them know that this is an agreement that has been struck with Corp Counsel, with Planning Department, Brad was in on all those meetings, and even with the mayor's office. Dave Gallin was in. Otherwise, we're spending a lot of time unnecessarily.
Yeah, I have not personally spoken to the Planning Board, but I believe Amy from my office has and has communicated our office's approval of the new ordinance to the Planning Board, and I believe, as far as I know, the mayor's office has done so as well.
And I can just follow up on that, Mike. I spoke with, and I believe Kelly did as well, spoke in depth with Dave Gallin on this, and they, this was the mayor's office's thought process, and they're fully supportive of it moving forward. They understood the desire to vote on this, since, I mean, this isn't, this is based on legislation that we've been working on for a very long time. Tom had this legislation for what, 18 months, Tom? And before we went through that whole process where everyone was in the room and we went line by line, nearly letter by letter. So it was, so it's not a brand-new thing, and the mayor's office recognized that and also recognized the desire to move forward with it quickly. So this was something that they came up with to make sure that Corp Counsel's office felt comfortable that we were following the letters of the law, and, but we could still move forward in a timely manner.
Mr. Conti, did you have?
Yeah, I mean, this drives me crazy because this is based, the Planning Board, again, already considered this issue. They made a recommendation. The council is basically acting, is taking their recommendation into consideration, acting on that. So I don't know why it goes back to the Planning Board, for the Planning Board to make their same recommendation again. You know, once they make a recommendation, we don't have to go back to them and confirm that, are we consistent with your recommendation? So I'm hoping that we'll be able to pass this on Monday and get it done with.
Right, yeah, yeah, agreed. And my understanding, and just from talking with Mr. Gallin, with both myself and Ms. Farrell, it was, this was going to be an expedited process.
I was concerned by sometimes when you accept certain things, we're establishing precedent when we shouldn't be accepting certain things procedurally because they infringe upon our authority.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Anani, did you?
No, I think Richard Conti said it very too often. We take action and send stuff to various departments and county agencies out of courtesy, and we don't have to. So I don't want us to start a practice where some of these departments are starting to ask, why didn't we send it to them? So again, just consistency, let's be consistent. If we don't have to send a specific document to an agency, we shouldn't, we just shouldn't because it's delaying, it's stalling time. Individuals have legislation that they've been working on for years, and they would like to see it move forward. So I just want us to be consistent so we don't confuse other agencies as to why they didn't receive a specific document where we didn't really have to send it to them anyway. Thank you.
So we'll try to get this turned around for Monday so we can vote on it. Next, we're on to resolutions introduced. The first by Ms. Farrell for Finance is 910220R.
Sorry, Kelly, I didn't mean, I don't mean to interrupt, because we're still, we're just entering resolutions. Mr. Anani expressed his ordinance 147220. That was, that I sent out earlier today to be voted on Monday. Just wanted to put that on there, that it will be amended onto the active calendar.
Hold on one second. Give me that again.
147220. I sent out the amended version earlier today.
Okay.
And this is the one that was in the General Services Committee. It moved out of committee with a favorable recommendation. Yeah, favorable recommendation with contingency of adding another penalty that both I and Corporation Counsel were working on to make sure it was fleshed out.
Yeah, I think we did that back in August 24th. So, but I do remember it coming favorably out.
Okay, we'll move that forth for a vote on Monday.
Can I ask a question on that one? The, this includes the notification through C Click Fix. Was that, I don't remember, was that discussed in committee?
Yes, that was discussed. That was the same ordinance. That's the same.
So that was in the original ordinance to C Click Fix?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just wondering, since.
I'm sorry, it wasn't in the original, it was amended to include it, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know if I was at that part of the meeting.
And, yeah, during the.
I raised that, Richard.
DGS was okay adding that?
Yes.
Okay, I doubt they're going to be ever able to comply with this, especially.
They said they are complying with it, and they're fine with it.
Not based on my experience. I suspect many.
Richard, Richard, it's a new day, be nice. It's a new day, once we pass this legislation, I think they're going to be a little bit more compliant, but yeah.
Yeah, right. And I got a bridge in Brooklyn to sell you.
Be nice, Richard.
Okay.
Concerned about, you know, I have to look at it more closely, some of the increase in the fines because it, there's broad application as to what that applies to, and I'm not sure, like, if you toss a candy wrapper, if that's a $1,000 fine, but I have to.
It won't apply to that one, it wasn't the general penalty section. This actually, what we did in committees, we actually created a new penalty section.
You amended the separate sections, and you added penalties to the separate sections up to $1,000, but, you know, whatever, whatever.
Thank you.
Richard, if I can just comment that one of the things that we found out in the discussions is that DGS isn't even fining people up to the $500 fine that exists. So it's kind of something that they do a little bit of a graduated, you know, when somebody, you know, second or third time when they're violating the statute, so.
Yeah. When you give people broad authority.
And Judy, just to even add to that, I heard the biggest fine is up to like 350 is the one that they have given out. So I hope that they will actually enforce this existing law.
Right, okay. And so just to make the adjustment from the active calendar, I jump, Mr. Hoey's was number 13. Mr. Anani's is actually number 10. So can you circle number 10 also in your agenda that will be taken up on Monday? All right. Those are the.
I'll amend the active calendar, too, we promptly added.
Thank you, thank you. So on to resolutions introduced. Again, 910220 by Ms. Farrell for Finance. Will be going to Finance, is resolution eliminating a full-time position in the Treasurer's Office. That'll be going to Finance. Okay, next resolution. 9110220R, Resolution, Common Council declaring October 20th through 25th is Free Speech Week. We've done this before, all members, I believe, in the past have been co-sponsors on that. Will that, everyone okay with that? Okay, and it'll be passed. Again, next is Resolution 9210220, declaring October 19th the Community Media Day. We've done this before also. Mr. Anani, you'll get to speak that night, of course. But members, all members co-sponsors on this one? Okay, so, okay, that'll be a pass. Next, 9310220 by me for Public Safety. It's Nairobi Vives, reappointing her as a member of Community Police Review Board. She was in the committee recently, got approved. So there was only a couple of months span of time in there between her approval and the expiration, and it expired, and so she's being reappointed. We don't need to bring her back in, so that'll be a pass. 9410220R, Resolution, Mr. Anani again, myself, declaring October 20th Digital Media, excuse me, Digital Inclusion Day in the City of Albany. All members.
Can I just ask, if a member has multiple resolutions that they're passing in one night, can we place some limitations on the amount of time that member speaks on the resolution?
Tell them, Richard, tell them.
I second that.
Yeah. Mr. Anani, get your speeches ready, your speeches are convincing, all right? They should cover all three resolutions. Okay, next resolution, 9510220R, Mr. Anani, Resolution to Support the City While We Make Election Day a Paid Holiday. That will go to Finance, but member thoughts on that? Go ahead, Richard.
I mean, it's sort of like almost voting on Election Day is becoming obsolete. With, we're really moving to no excuse absentee balloting. We have it right now, this year at least, and with the expansion of early voting. I don't, I don't understand why we would make Election Day a paid holiday where there is so many more options now for people to vote. And as I say, we're really, I mean, Election Day is almost becoming like, you know, fewer votes are being cast on Election Day now than in other venues. So I have concerns about it and what the financial impact might be.
Right, so that's why the referral to Finance for further discussion.
Kelly, if I could just add really briefly, it is currently.
We can't hear you. You're not.
What I'm saying is that it is currently a floating holiday for city workers to make a decision if they want to use that day. So again, this is already existed, but it's just to kind of encourage and support those type of actions that the state has taken, and also the federal government seemed like that's the direction that they're going. But if, JR, do you want to speak on the fiscal impact?
Fiscal impact in what way? The.
Because I was under the impression that it won't be any fiscal, fiscal impact, but Richard brought it up, so I don't know if you had any.
You're creating a new holiday, and then it's not, it would not apply to collective bargaining agreements, but when we do this thing.
All right, send it to finance, all right, thank you.
Incorporated into collective bargaining agreements.
Right, and I'm sure, I don't imagine that with everything that's going on, that it'll be ready for this year, everything going on in finance, but that's, that's where it's going to go. So, okay, next, and we'll just group these together, it's those resolutions for the capital reserve funds. It's 9610220 through 1010220, creating the reserve funds, those will go to finance.
Kelly, can I say something about that? Are we going to have somebody that's going to follow on those reserve funds? You know, once they're established, you know, how, how that, just follow up on the purpose and making sure that these funds start hitting where they need to go. I think it's a need for that. You know.
These are, you're absolutely right that a normal capital reserve fund, that is the function that it's something that is created that then you use in future years for capital projects. But for some reason, they're creating them to use this year, which doesn't exactly make sense. So we're, we're going to find some more, we're going to find out more about it to see exactly why they're creating capital reserve fund for funds that they're using immediately. Because you're right, like, that's, that would be the normal, what people would do and what, there should be some sort of oversight and watchdog view on exactly how the money is being spent. But it's being immediately spent, so. So we'll get more to the bottom of it, definitely before finance committee meetings, but it's a slightly different situation.
Okay.
Normally, great questions, if they were set up correctly.
And I would just point out, in response to councilmember Johnson's question, that the language of the resolution establishing the funds, it does state that the treasurer's office would render to the council a detailed report of the operation and condition of the reserve fund at the end of each fiscal year. Again, that doesn't quite address the problem, or problem as the council sees it of them using the funds immediately necessarily, but that, that is a little bit of oversight that the council would have, which is built right into the legislation establishing the reserve funds.
Question, Brett, if they, if there's a transfer made with the capital reserves funds and it hits a certain threshold under the charter, that would then trigger, it has to come back to the council, right?
Yeah, possibly, and I think, I'm looking at the resolution again, and I think they have to, there's some level of council approval for any expenditure, yeah, here we go. No expenditure shall be made from this reserve fund without the approval of the council and such additional actions or proceedings as may be required by section C of the general municipal law. So the council has some oversight as well when monies get transferred out of the fund. And that resolution language comes directly from the state, I would note as well.
We're a talking committee.
Okay, Richard?
Yeah, I think what, maybe the issue that JR was raising was the charter provision that caps the amount of transfers that E and A can do before the council approves.
I was saying that, and also I was being more general too, but yes, that was.
Would this, but would the, I didn't, I haven't really looked at the language, would transfers out of this reserve fund have to go through E and A and then count as a transfer against that 4% limit? And I haven't, again, I haven't really looked closely at the language, and that's just an issue out there. JR kind of likes, sparked me on that one.
The resolution itself, I don't think addresses that particular issue, councilmember Conti. So I don't have a good answer for you on that, as I said.
Okay, Mr. Igo. You're muted. You're saying wrap it up? I can't, okay, all right, so just, that's the, that's the end of the agenda. Danielle sent out a public comment line. Did you all see the email with the new contact number for folks leaving public comment? I see some heads, but I don't see all. It's a record, kind of a, an answering machine where they can record up to five minutes of public comment, which we could play at a meeting. Would appreciate if members would push that out. It would really be helpful in trying to capture more, more public comment and more public input. Also, I know we're out of our executive session, but the whole lawsuit thing, no comments or the press, we're steering clear, the press, any, anything related to that has to go through JR or the Piercekey Law Firm. We're clear on that, right, everyone?
No, can I say something, Kelly? I read that editorial and my blood pressure went up, and I almost fired off a letter, so I'm glad I didn't. And actually, I met Judy on Monday and, you know, we talked about it. But I, when something like that happens, if we should not say anything, I'd appreciate just a little more of a heads up because I almost did fire something off, I was so upset reading it, so that's all.
Okay.
The moral of that is, our job is easy, we do whatever we're told.
Right, yeah.
It seemed to be what the editorial said.
Yeah, so unless anyone has anything else.
Oh, there's just a couple of things from leadership that I would want to bring up, Kelly.
Okay. Just let Wusu go first, and then you can go.
Yeah, go ahead, Wusu.
Yeah, no, I did see the press release that was sent out today, and I just want to say for the record, there are some members about, you know, community that prefer to send letters for the clerk to read it. So I just want to make it clear, you know, there is who are not watching, that the clerk will no longer read, you know, public comments that's sent in. Is that correct, Danielle?
That's not a determination for me to make, that's a determination for council leadership to make.
Yeah, council leadership, is that correct?
Any direction council leadership requests.
And so we've had this discussion before, we are, at this point, in our regular meetings, we didn't. But after discussion with members over the last couple of months regarding this, the agreement was that during, we'd split the public comment, if folks were in, in the room, they'd get to go in the first section of public comment, and then anything that needed to be read would be read in the second public comment session, second half.
Okay, so Danielle will still read public comments, okay, thank you so much.
Anything?
Yeah, I would, I wanted to say, I wanted to talk about what took place in my neighborhood today. We were given two-day notice, three-day notice about the city renting out our community to a production company. The communication, the he say, she say stuff, it's terrible. We should expect more from the mayor's office for a part of town that, that has been feeling neglected for a long time. And for us to be told that, you know, they paid to be able to do this, and, you know, for the the solutions to be, to have people walk five blocks to park their, you know, to park their car and have to walk five blocks home, where in every direction, it includes a hill. We have elderly, we have a school over there, we have immigrants that don't, you know, that are struggling with the English language. So, so for people to wake up and they couldn't find their cars, and just for how sloppy, sloppy and poorly it was executed, I don't think, I think that we should have a conversation because our residents deserve better than to just be told that the, the production company jumped the gun. So if the production company didn't put out the paperwork, we wouldn't have never known that they were coming to our neighborhood. And so, you know, just the way this whole thing was handled, it just put an already bad taste to a bad taste that's been in our mouth for a long time. And I, and I think that the residents deserve better. I don't think that the, the production company handled other neighborhoods in Albany the same way. And, and I just don't think that it was responsible by the city. So moving forward, something should be put in place so people don't have to wake up and go through the experiences that they did today. Thank you.
Okay, if no one has anything else, motion to adjourn?
Oh, I had the.
Oh, that's right, you're.
Yeah, I just wanted to note, the, the, during our leadership meeting, the mayor said that they're going to be having a command center during election day and that they're just starting to plan ahead for possible issues. There might not be any issues, it might be fine, and of course, the Board of Elections is a county-wide thing, but she, just within the city, to make sure things go smoothly within the city, that they're definitely looking at that and starting to plan for that. So if any council members know of anything or have any issues with that, you can talk to Kelly or I, and we can connect you or directly with the mayor's office and share that with them. Also, although we don't have any firm information yet on Halloween, they're, they are talking about doing events in some parks across the city. Powell's going to be doing something in Washington Park, the Boys and Girls Club will be doing something onsite. The mayor said that she, anything that is done, she wanted to happen in daylight and involve the community. So they are looking at different parks to actually kind of set up trick-or-treating situations. So different neighbors will be able to go to the parks, and they'd be looking from like, you know, three to five or three to four, something like that during the day, where the kids in that neighborhood could actually do like, kind of a socially-distanced trick-or-treating, but it's not going the house to house. She also said that it's, there's not going to be a ban on trick-or-treating. If there are neighborhoods that want to continue to, they can figure out a way that they can do it socially-distanced. But there's a lot of people that are not comfortable doing trick-or-treating at their house, but still want to, you know, still want to participate, so this, they're looking at options to kind of enable that. So we should be hearing, if there's going to be something in your ward or close to your ward, you'll likely be hearing from the Parks Department to talk about logistics with that. Again, if anybody has any questions or anything like that, feel free to reach out to Kelly or I or the mayor's office to kind of facilitate that. And that's it. I think, Kelly, you're muted.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
On favor.
Hi.
All right, everyone, have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody, good to see everybody.